Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone, or good afternoon, I guess. I'd like to welcome everybody to the October 8th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. This is the work session portion of the Planning Commission, which will last from 4:00 to 5:30, and then we will reconvene at 6 o'clock for the public hearing section. Let me read this first. The opportunities for the public to access and participate in the hybrid meeting are posted on the Almaral County website, on the Planning Commission homepage, and on the Almaral County calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters for which comments from the public will be received. So with that, I'll call the meeting to order and establish a quorum. Could we have the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Missel.
Here.
Mr. Carizana.
Here.
Mr. Bivens.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk and Mr. Claiborne are both absent.
Great, thank you. With that, I want to make one mention of the public comment section of this work session. Typically, we don't field public comments for work sessions. There are a lot of opportunities to have input into the conversations that we're going to have this evening relative to the comprehensive plan. But with that, I do want to just take a minute and open it up for public comment on matters pending before the commission but not listed on public hearings on this agenda. Are there any that anyone would like to share? All right, seeing none, that's great, thank you. That allows the most time for us to hear from staff and to discuss. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any commissioners who would like to pull this item from the consent agenda, or is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have the roll, please. Any discussion?
And I'm assuming that the motion is to approve the consent agenda submitted.
Oh, the motion is to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Who seconded it?
Mr. Carizana.
That's what I thought, just want to make sure.
Any discussion? All right, could we have the roll, please?
All right, Mr. Bivens.
Aye.
Mr. Carizana.
Aye.
Mr. Missel.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Thank you.
Awesome. And with that, we will move on to the work session, CPA 2021-2, AC44 Growth Management, Flume, Activity Centers Policies. I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michael Barnes, Director of Planning. Tanya and I are going to provide this presentation to you all tonight. I'm going to start with a little bit of an overview, and then she will work with a lot of the details that we were asking for feedback. Broadly speaking, tonight's work session, the two of us will be covering sort of the document structure. Then I'll be working a lot with the orientation of the document review. Growth Management Policy, the Development Area Utilization Review. Those latter two, you're going to see, I'll refer to the three different structures of the document. The second two will be in the part, second part of the document, the comp plan. And then in the third one, we'll be beginning one of the topic chapters, which is Development Area Land Use. And we're going to like, make you guys the tools that we're going to be talking about, especially for the general public this month. And finally, we conclude with some upcoming steps. So I just wanted to give you all a broad overview of what the structure of the document is. Again, we'll get into a little bit more details of that, Tanya's presentation. But there are four major sections of this document. The first one's sort of an introductory one, the context section. It's been a little bit about, you know, the basic stuff of, you know, why you do a comp plan, its requirements under state code. But importantly, it's sort of major trends, sort of issues that we're facing as a community. We'll also be dealing with what the community's vision is for dealing with some of that. And of course, as been central to this effort the whole time, the four guiding principles and the lens of equity and climate change will be housed in this first part. In the second part of the document, we'll be stating clearly what the growth management policy is for the county. Talking about Development Area Utilization Review, again, Tanya will get more into that. And one thing that we're not going to bring you tonight, but that we will probably bring you at the end of the process, is sort of a, I'm sort of, it's distinguishing the forest for the trees, right? You shouldn't have to read the whole document to understand what it is the county wants to achieve. So we're going to finish this section when we sort of go through these 10 topic chapters. And the idea here is how is the growth management policy applied in the rural area and in the development area across these 10 topic chapters? Part three, this is really the meat of the plan, if you will. We have these 10 topic chapters, and those things will broadly be spoken in two different halves. The first one is to orient the user to, the reader to, hey, these are the major policies of the document. And the second half of it is the goals and objectives. And within that first half, it's the idea of sort of broadly on that topic area, you know, what is the, what are the major challenges there? What, you know, why are we even doing this? And, and sort of how is county addressing it? What are the tools that the county has to address that topic area? And that's really going to start to form the basis of the goal statement. The other one is sort of identifications of specific sets of solutions to these challenges. And that will be the basis to the objective, and then the actions, which will be how we're willing to try and meet that objective and further advance that goal. The final part of the document will be an appendancy, and that will, where we'll house a lot of policies of the county. I think the intent is, as you move through this document, is to try to make it effective in the day and age we live in, where people tend to, you know, don't have as much time to read a longer document. So trying to make it a more streamlined document and more getting to the point. So as we move through the topic chapter areas, we may be addressing something like, I don't know, Project Enable. And in the topic area, we're talking about economic development. We'll, we'll reference the doc, we'll reference Project Enable, and we'll sort of talk about what its major things that it's trying to achieve, but there'll be a hyperlink which takes you down to the appendix when you get in down to all the details of what the Project Enable Plan is trying to do. Again, trying to sort of meet the modern times we're in. I know there's been a lot of questions, what's happened between the previous version that we had and the current version that we're working on? And I would stress that there's a lot of similarities. One of the major things we've done is, you see, the previous one had three sections, and it had eight topic chapters. This one has four sections and 10 topic chapters. One of the major things we've done is to put the growth management policy sort of front and center. It's such a foundational policy for everything we do in the county that we felt it was important to sort of put in its own section and really highlight it. And again, sort of give that forest for the trees, if you will. With the topic chapter areas, you can sort of see, I've tried to sort of set these things up so that you can sort of see the changes. Originally, we had a rural area and development area land use with transportation, because those uses are so, those two topics are so closely tied together. We have since split that apart to have a development area land use chapter, and that's going to be the first one you guys are going to review. And then a rural area land use chapter, and have a transportation chapter sort of sits on its own. It will cover both, it'll cover for the entire county. The other major change is we've added a 10th chapter, which is Resilient Communities. It's the climate change one, and it's make sure that that topic is, is well addressed. And I think a basic thing in the plan is try and use these topic areas just to deal with a topic at hand. Also, often you'll find that policies that we're trying to do probably bleed across a couple of different topic areas. But to the extent we can sort of have a deeper discussion of that in one spot, as opposed to having it in a couple of spots in the chat, in the document, will hopefully bring a little more clarity to it and avoid some sort of contradictions that can crop up when you start dealing with things separately. So that was another kind of aspect. And then finally, I would, you know, there's some minor changes. We went from having Chapter 6 as Parks and Recreation before, now it's Parks, Recreation, and Open Space, Community Facilities, Community Facilities and Services. And those are, those are principal changes. And the last thing I would just say, I think I'm new, Tanya's a bit new. We were here for four months, we were five months, we were wrapping up Phase 2 and moving to Phase 3. And there was a little bit of time that we just needed to sort of wrap our heads around and sort of talk about how the structure made sense and get into some of the details of how it would be written. And I know there's been concern about the delay that we may have installed with this, that, this change that we've been working on. But I would just assure everybody that, you know, what we're getting ready to go into now is a reflection of all the input we got from Phase 1 and Phase 2. And what we're really trying to do is find a really good way to distill that down and make it a meaningful document for both the commission and the community as a whole.
Thank you. Can I just interrupt with one, two questions, or one question and one thing just to get on the record? One is, I'm curious, what happened to number five, Economic Development, on the previous version? Did that get wrapped into a section?
That's our, excuse me, thank you, I meant to mention that. So Economic Development became Thriving Community. It is, it is an economic development chapter.
That makes sense. And then the other quick question is, and you alluded to this a little bit, but there have been questions, as you said, about sort of the pause that we had. Or I know you didn't pause as much as we probably paused, but the community engagement process is continuing and has been ongoing. And I think you just mentioned that all the input to date has been continued to be baked into this, right? So there's not been work that's gone on without community involvement.
Exactly. No, basically, any of the changes that have been happening here are more structural and, and also how we want to make sure the document flows. It's not been structured, it's not been changes to content.
Got it, thank you.
The last thing I want to talk about is sort of our upcoming schedule, what we're hoping to do over the next little bit here. We have these 10 chapters. We will be finalizing those in a, you know, a sequence process. Hopefully, we'll have those done towards the end of March. But we'll be bringing them out, we'll have the last one done towards the end of March. But we'll be bringing out chapters to you all steadily over the next couple of months. I almost have a final schedule as I sit here and try and work that with the review that the Planning Commission will have to do, and with the board, and the boards need to attend to other matters. It's a complicated dance, if you will, of trying to get a schedule put together. And I hope to come to you all at the next meeting with a, with a true schedule, we're really trying to do. But broadly speaking, I think there's, I can, I can commit to this, that we'll be working between now and April on these 10 chapters. And we will try to get those chapters to you all well in advance of your Planning Commission meeting. Especially as far that we move out, I can commit to getting those to you sooner and letting you all have time to read them. And enough time you can sort of digest them, you're not getting them the week before type of thing. It's going to be a little bit tight for this Development, Development Area Land Use chapter, we'll be doing next, that's going to come out next, early next week. But we're going to do two work sessions on that. So hopefully, you'll be able to fully digest that. And then the idea would be to wrap up with all of our work with the Planning Commission and the board on these 10 chapters by April. And then remember that these chapters are really the third section of this document. The first section, the second section, we're going to sort of talk to you about those tonight. But as far as the actual, and some of it will be the written text that you'll see for some of these components of those. But we'll need to go back and finish writing that. And in part, again, that summation of what we've been talking about, these 10 chapters will be in that. So our idea is to bring that to you all back in the April to June timeframe, and then to go to a public hearing for the Planning Commission and the board in the July, August timeframe. I mean, obviously, with this stuff, the, our capacity to get through the process will be largely dependent on the speed with which you all and the board are willing, you know, you will, you will have a lot of control in the pacing of what we move forward with the document. But our intent right now is to follow that.
That was, I'm sorry to interrupt again. If you, do you mind?
Please.
Sorry, just a quick question. On the PC and board, we talked a little bit about this a couple of days ago. Just for everybody on the commission, the timing sometimes will feel tight, where we'll have a meeting and the board will meet the week later or very soon thereafter. And one of the things I know we've talked a lot about is how is our input being provided to the board? And so I would imagine also, there may be times where the board says, hey, I'd love to get the Planning Commission's input on this. It's still an outstanding issue. I assume it's a bit of an iterative process, kind of back and forth, right? Until the actual review of the final plan. So while I know the process wants to click forward seamlessly, there may be starts and stops, hopefully as few as possible, just so that we can be coordinated with the board and they can get our input.
And thank you. And I'd also underline, our intent is to try and get it to you, you know, to space out the differences between the Planning Commission and the board as much as possible, you know, a week, two weeks. There may be a meeting or two where we, it's going to be extremely tight. But that's not our intent, and our intent is to try and build in that enough time that we can either have the minutes or enough capacity to summarize the major points that were discussed here so that we can bring that into the board's discussion. I know, I know that's a very, I know that the board treasures the, the input from the Planning Commission, so we want to respect that part of the process.
Great, thanks.
The last thing I want to talk about is public engagement. We held a working group last night, AC44 Working Group last night, and started talking to them about some of the stuff that's a lot of part of today's presentation, some of the Development Area Land Use Tools, Land Use Categories, the Future Land Use Map, Flum, for those who want to abbreviate as such, and the Activity Centers. And we wanted to like, make sure that you all knew about this, we're going to make sure that the board knows about this next week, because we met with the working group last night, we're going to be meeting on an all CAC meeting at the end of the month. And then we're going to try and continue the meeting with those two groups in a, on a regular basis between now and April so that they can sort of follow along where we're going, sort of, you know, A, to communicate out, but also receive back in some input. But again, a lot of what we're writing is based on several years of input to the, to the process. And then finally, as we get through April, and we have had this discussion of the 10 topic chapters, is to hold a series of open houses to sort of say, hey, this is what we talked about, this is what we think we've heard, you know, make sure that the general public sort of gets that summation of what really is the meat of the plan. And use that information from those open houses to really then draft the final document that we would bring back in April and June to the, again, to the Planning Commission for review, and then eventually forward as well for a public hearing. But broadly speaking, that's our strategy for moving forward. So I'll turn it over to Tanya now, if you guys don't have any questions on what I just talked about. And thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, Tanya Sworzenberger, Planning Manager for the Community Development Department, here on behalf of the AC44 staff team to review a couple of key concepts in the comp plan or AC44. I'll run through this afternoon's presentation, and we can take questions along the way. My colleague Tori is also here to help work through any questions that we have. Let's start with what you received in your packet, a little bit of admin here. The attachment A was really giving you an overview. This is the memo or executive summary, if you will, to, to give you an idea of what, what was in that pack, or what's, we'll be talking about today. Attachment B, sorry, that's up on the screen now, is really intended to give you an overview of how the parts relate. And so you can see all the pieces. The text that is highlighted or boxed in red is what we'll be talking about today. The, the concepts will be contained within that section of the outline. Let's see, the dates and information that is in blue is really about previous work sessions that we talked about, a similar topic or a topic that could be considered underneath that heading. For example, under Environmental Stewardship. When do we talk about those goals and objectives, those dates, is there for your reference? And then-
I'm sorry, just a quick question. So you're looking at, you have this marked as attachment B?
Yes.
Don't we have it as attachment A, or am I missing it?
Is that-
It looks like attachment A.
Oh, it is? Okay, I apologize. It is attachment A.
I just want to make sure we didn't miss an attachment.
There's things that are attachment A at the top, but then it's also attached 2 at the bottom.
Okay.
Part 2.
Part 2. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But yeah.
B is the bigger document with more red circle.
Yes, yes, that's the way it should be. So what I was just explaining, the blue on attachment A is the previous work sessions. And then the text in orange on that same attachment is the upcoming work sessions, just so you can start to see when we'll be coming with those. I guess attachment B is the longer document. This is the text document that you received in Word with the text that houses the information about the concepts we'll talk about tonight in red text, starting with the Development Area Land Use chapter. So one of the, the first of the 10 chapters in Part 3, you'll be getting a PDF of this where you'll be able to make your comments directly on the PDF. But for, for this particular part, we just went ahead and gave you just the straight text since there wasn't a lot of graphic content to it. By the end of this work session, we'd like your input on the two questions here regarding the concepts of the growth management policy and the monitoring of the development areas. We'll check in on those at the end of the presentation. The land use tools that are, were also included in your packet is really for your information. Like Michael said, we'll be giving, we will be presenting this to the public on the 30th and really wanted to start to give you some of the information and start to digest some of the meatier parts of the chapter ahead of time in an effort to give you a little more time to get through the material. And just to be clear, just to state that our CAC meeting will be on the 30th in Lane Auditorium right here. I believe it's at 6, 6 o'clock. So you may hear constituents talking about it. So our county established a growth management policy with the adoption of the first comp plan in 1971. It designates our growth area or development areas and the rural area. Similar growth management policies are used throughout Virginia and across the country. Currently, the development area is shown here in blue, and I apologize, the county outline doesn't stand out quite as well as I would have liked, but the development area is really the blue on the map. That sort of center areas, the city of Austin, or the city of Charlottesville, of course. And then the rest of it is the 90%, 95% of the county land that is within the rural area. "The purpose of the policy is to encourage vibrant, mixed-use, dense, and walkable development in the development areas supported by infrastructure and amenities in order to protect the natural, historic, scenic, and cultural resources in the rural area. Having designated growth areas helps to avoid sprawl and supports the efficient and more cost-effective provision of public infrastructure and services." So with AC44, the growth management policy is carried forward with several updates to the policy to reflect the community input and to incorporate equity and climate action while keeping the purpose of the policy, the core purpose of the policy. First, we went ahead and made it clear that the county is planning for current and future community members. And then we added language to specifically list the policy, the areas of policy that the, that the policy guides, which is land use, capital projects or investments, and public services. We also added language to include small businesses and limited public services in the rural area to support the existing communities that are there. And then lastly, we added language to include distinct boundaries between the development areas and the rural area, basically eliminate, trying to get out the trans, there being little transition between the two and being distinct areas. Here we've got the proposed language on the screen. I'm happy to read this out if, or we can take a minute just to let you all read it yourselves. It's important text. And also want to pause to see if you all have any questions on this language.
All right, I'm just gonna, I have a lot of my comments written into the document that you gave us.
Okay.
Where, I should know this, where is this in those documents? Four, thank you.
Page four?
Page four. You got it. Okay, Chair. Do you want us to, to stop and take questions now on this specific area?
I'm happy to. If you'd like to wait until the end, we can, we can wait till the end. I just thought this might be an apro, an apropos time to go ahead and address any questions or comments that we have.
Yeah, let's do it in bite-sized, is it, so you, you're going to present it kind of in bite-sized pieces?
Yeah.
Sure, let's do that.
I think that works.
Take a pause and circulate, since I'm making eye contact.
You're looking at me.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, so there's some definitional issues that hopefully you'll get to when you start scratching down further. So this whole idea of, and this is in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, the 6 line, or it goes down to the 7th line. We're sort of talking about historic and cultural resources. I, I would hope that we would give some definition to what those are and, and what they mean, and that they, we don't fall into sort of a nebulous sort of context of what's historic, particularly in our historically conflicted area. And what is a, and what is a, a cultural resource? So to have some sense, because there's that, there's that counterbalance. If you say this is going to be a welcoming place to a whole diverse group of people, or a whole eclectic, I'll use eclectic as, as opposed to diverse, an eclectic group of people, it's good, it would be good to know what's the definition of historic and cultural in that standpoint. And then, if I might, it, it, that's sort of that, that, there are these, there are, again, there are definitional words in here. So when we say we're going to be a welcoming community that will grow equitably and sustainably, supporting the needs of current and future community members for housing jobs in a healthy environment, I imagine that there'll be some ways of which to define that and to be able to understand whether or not we've been successful to date. And if not, how do we close the gap? And if, and if, and if after we close the gap, or make, or the supervisors make whatever decisions they're going to make about that, how we go forward to sort of craft the kind of community that you lay out in, in, in that strategic plan? Because it's not apparent to me that we, that we're there now. In fact, I will say, we're not there now. And then how do we get to a place that will in fact be an indicator that we are that, we are there now? Or that we're approaching the now, whatever that is? And then I will also say, and other people will speak more elegantly about this than I could, I, I still contend that it's hard to think of, 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 of different kinds of housing in the development area when we look at, when we look further on and see everything is, I think it's orange, I may be wrong, some people are better. We, we've discussed orange, which is the, the middle density.
Middle residential?
Yeah, thank you. But really, we still remain a yellow, I think we still remain a yellow community.
The neighborhood residential?
The neighborhood, thank you, which means that we're not looking at how do we, how do we provide more opportunities for people who are more eclectic, have more eclectic sort of incomes, or have desires not to be in the, in the traditional suburban house, housing type, which is what we basically are now. We're basically, we're basically a suburban community. And so it's that whole thing about the definitional pieces around, around historic and, and cultural. And then the whole idea of how do we know that where we are is where we should be, or where we hope to be. I shouldn't say should, where we'd hope to be. And then when we start future casting, whether or not that's a set of possibilities that are obtainable, given the constraints, the financial constraints, the land constraints, which I guess we'll talk about at some other point. And just basically the fact we still, in this version of the, what did you call it, the flan?
Flum?
That's not flan, that's something you eat. At the flum, that we're still basically a suburban type community, you know, single-family suburban type community on some X amount of land. And so that's what, Chair, when I look at the growth management plan, I see the words have been enhanced, but I don't know necessarily if the outcomes have been changed.
So this is a good, good, this is a great little sort of snapshot here. So as we think through comments, just to focus you back on your initial question. The question was, does the growth management policy meet the needs of the county, basically, right? So this is the growth- So this is the growth management, if you go back a slide, I think that's, that's the growth management policy. So what I think I hear you saying is it needs to be better defined to really understand if it does meet the, the requirements of the county or the needs of the county, because that missing middle aspect of residential is one example where maybe it doesn't.
If I look at the, if I look at this future land use, I'm going to call it flan because that's what it feels like to me. If I look at that, it's, it doesn't, I don't see it. And I know we, the only reason I sort of sit on that is we wrestled with that in Croze, and we each have our own battle scars from that conversation. And then we wrestled with it when we were talking about the, the small area plan in Ryo, on Ryo Road, which is another place that we sort of thought that that would be an appropriate place. And so we've done a lot of work and had a lot of discussion about this. And other people will speak more eloquently about this, I'm sure. But I don't, I, I'm not seeing that when I look at the, what colors are first on here? You know, neighborhood residential is first, office flex and industrial or second, industrial second, and then urban residential or third, is third, when I look at the colors on this map. And that seems like we missed an opportunity on the thing that we've hoped for.
Got it. Great, thanks.
So let me just say that it's interesting to hear you talk about that. So again, hopefully, as we're going through the topic chapters, you know, we're going to do, you know, jobs one, for example, hopefully in the thriving economy, we're talking about how we're trying to create the jobs that are equitable and sustainable. The healthy environment, environmental stewardship, we'll be talking a lot about, obviously, how we're protecting terrestrial and aquatic ecosystems. So I think that you, hopefully, what you will, as we move through these topic chapters, you'll be calling us out for not getting far enough into those metrics or not being detailed enough. Again, I would just sort of say balance that against comp plans are, they're not always like a laundry list of specifics. And, but we do, I think, hear your point of needing to be as clear as we can about, hey, these are the issues we face and these are the possible solutions that we have. And when we start looking at the objectives and action statements, are those things doing that? And maybe do your point, and this is going to be tough, are they, do they have a way that you can put a metric to it? Can you measure its success or not?
I think you've hit on, if I may, Chair, I think you've hit on it sort of in a very elegant way, Michael. One of the things I think we've, we will wrestle with as a community, having now lived here over 30 some odd years, close to 40 years, is that there is this, there is this sort of sometime violently loud resistance to increasing funding to the county. Sometimes it's a murmur, oftentimes it's violently loud. And so in order to balance that conversation, I think in today's world, it would behoove the supervisors and county staff, including us, to be able to articulate in a manner that says, here's what we're doing for this place. Now, there's, I mean, I will agree upfront, there's always going to be a bunch of people that say, no growth is my growth here, and you know, I want no, I'm the no growth, my growth, no. But the reality of that is unless we're going to ballot off 29 and 64 and 250, that's an unreasonable place to live. It's also an unfair place to live, even if I believe half of the stuff that comes from our founding fathers. This is not a place that's, that is an island unto itself. It's a place that's integrated into the, in both the county, the state, and then the nation and at large. And so this whole idea that we have to be able to do, I think, and what we would expect anybody else to do, is to be able to articulate, this is what we want, and that's got to have a CIP behind it. And that CIP is going to cost something. And we're, we're making that decision, or people who sit here are making that decision because they believe, in certain ways with feedback and all the feedback channels, that this is the county that we're called to be. That's not, that's not the frozen chosen.
Well, to, to, I'm not going to respond to the, to the commentary of that or the political aspects. I'm just trying to be the vehicle for that decision to be able to happen. Again, I think part of it is to be able to clearly say, this is the kind of the problem we've faced within this topic area. And to be able to say, hey, here are the potential solutions that we think are the ones that are right there. And then when we get to the actions, we really are trying to group them into, these are things that you either need new policies or new regulations to deal with. These are things you need to make new investments, whether they are capital improvement or programmatic. These are partnerships and cooperation that we need to try and develop. And there's a fourth thing, and it's not coming to right this second. But the point of it is to try to create a structure for decision makers to sort of say, these are the things that are important to us. Now, how those things ultimately get weighed or prioritized of what we work on first or not? Staff is not trying to articulate that. But I think there is a capacity within the future document or writing for people to do that.
I think that's key, too, as the rest of us make our comments, because I had some comments that were probably too in the weeds for this level of policy. Not that yours were, but just, just as I think ahead and as I listen to you also, this, this is going to be discussed. It's going to be refined. There will be action items. There will be, how do we define high-quality public infrastructure, for example? Which was one of the questions I had, right? It's just, this is sort of a very general, high-level statement, so.
This is part two of the document, right?
Yeah.
So this, what this does is this little like gives you a sort of orientation of what our principal goals are of the county.
Yeah.
It's the growth management policy, and the growth management policy can reflect a lot of things we're going to try and achieve in those 10 topic chapters.
Yep.
And we're also going to follow this up again with this sort of a summary. It's going to be a tough thing to write, to make it short, but yet make it comprehensive enough that as you read through it, the ideas that are in this two paragraph statement are play out in the rural area and the development area across these topic areas, generally speaking like this. And then the third one, hey, welcome to the weeds, we're here.
Right. You should title it that, Welcome to the Weeds.
Welcome to the Weeds.
And I'm going to be brief, because that's always, get through part of this. I want to say I appreciate everyone's, that staff's work on, on looking to, I don't know if simplify is the right word, but I think it's much more legible. And I can appreciate some of the languages in here. So I think from that standpoint, I, when you went, when you go through it, it's, you can absorb it and understand the, the process that you're laying out. You're going through it with, you know, kind of introduction, guiding principles. So it's, it's, it's simpler to understand, somebody that picks it up. I'm trying to put myself in different readers that might, might be accessing this document. And just to go back, so by doing that, and sometimes when you, when you simplify things, we make statements that are, they sound fine, but it's, it's like, use an example, affordable housing, right? So we all want it, we all are trying to achieve it and maximize our stock. But we don't necessarily do a very good job of measuring, how are we doing with our housing stock? So the same thing with some of these principles, guiding principles that we're putting in here. And I think to go back and really to reinforce what my colleague was saying is putting, and I don't see it right now, but as you said, going into the weeds. But I think it's important at a high level to be thinking, what are the measurable outcomes that we're going to tackle here? And how do we begin to incorporate that into our, our process? Because we want to make sure somehow that we, if we're making mistakes now, let's not repeat them. And, and if we're going to deviate from that because we think we can achieve the more equitable, sustainable communities, thriving communities, all these great principles that we have laid out, let's have a way to measure it. Let's have a way to say, and I know that that's, certainly that how we do it is getting into the weeds, but having the overarching value that that's something that we're going to be building into this process is, is something that we should be thinking at a high level as well. So, you know, pass it off to you.
Good summary. Mr. Moore?
Oh, sure. Okay, we're going to move to the center. That's cool. Well, thank you to staff for, for putting it together. I think the word, making it more legible and a fairly clear language is very much appreciated. I do, did like reading through it for understanding. The basic question that was on the screen, although our screen keeps going in and out, by the way, for tech support. The basic question that was on the screen was, does the growth, the growth management policy meet the needs of the county? You know, as much as a lot of the parts seem nice, I would say no, and I will keep it at top level. And for me, it's the word welcoming, because we, let me tell a little story. It was, I kind of came across this, this motto of North Carolina by accident, which was to be, not to seem. And in this policy, there's a lot of seeming, and I'm not sure if we're actually being. And if I think about being welcoming, I think about this parable in the book of Matthew where, you know, when I was hungry, you gave me food. When I was thirsty, you gave me something to drink. When I was needing clothing, you clothed me. When I was sick, you visited me, you took care of me. It does not say, you know, when I was a stranger and needed shelter, you said, that'll be half a million dollars, champ, you paying cash or mortgage, you know? And so I think the draft proposal codifies really a one-two punch that makes us not welcoming. One is by not expanding the development area. And the other is by sort of only trimming around the edges in terms of upzoning in the development area. And I think, you know, still predominantly neighborhood residential, as Commissioner Bivins was saying. I think those two punches together are going to guarantee that homes become less affordable, that people who work for wages are going to be pushed out, that we're going to struggle to find sites for future economic development, and that our community is going to suffer for that loss. So that's hard words, but that's my, my, my take on the top level.
So just to make sure we understand your comments, does this growth management policy meet the needs of the county in your opinion? And if not, in one sentence, how does it not?
Sure. No, and it doesn't by not expanding the development area and not going far enough on densifying inside the development area.
Perfect. Okay. Great. Thank you. Mr. Murray?
Well, I can agree with half of that.
I know you can.
Obviously, I disagree about the expansion of the growth area. What I, what I think this, this fails to do, and I would say no. I don't think drastic revisions need to be made, but I think what this is really clearly lacking is, is the why. Because it's, it's talking about, you know, different kinds of housing types and different kinds of uses in the rural area, but it doesn't say why. And what should really clearly articulate is that we're trying to encourage compact, high-quality, sustainable development in the growth area that provides efficient delivery of services and that seeks to limit suburbanization and sprawl into the rural area. That's what the why is. That's what it's, should be trying to do. And instead, we've sort of listed the bits and pieces.
Great. Okay. Great. Thank you. So I'll, just my comments, I don't want to repeat anything that's been said. Generally speaking, I would say that if I have the lens, which is so hard to do in our world, right? That lens of stay high up, don't get into the weeds. I think, unless I'm mistaken here, let's just take why, for example. I think some of the why will be revealed, right? We'll be able to get into the detail, we'll be able to make sure that it achieves that as we move forward. I think generally speaking, I think, the other thing is, I think one thing that we've heard from the Board of Supervisors, not to discredit what you're saying regarding the growth areas.
I am not them, yeah.
There, we're, we're not going to expand the growth areas, right? That's, that's been determined, right? I mean, that's water under the bridge, just, just so that we, we all agree that that's a thing.
For this complaint.
Yeah, for this complaint. Yeah, exactly. Not for all future mankind. And then the last thing, just to mention, the development area and rural area will have distinct boundaries without low-density transition areas. That was one thing I just, I, I don't know why that, to use your word, why, I don't know why that is. Maybe there's a really good reason for it, but why are we saying we're not going to provide low-density transition areas?
I think the idea has always been that you're going to try and use your development areas as efficiently as possible and that we're really not trying to sort of create a sprawl or a low-density transition area between that and the rural areas.
I see. So if you're focusing on providing transition areas, you may miss the opportunity to create density at those boundaries.
Yeah, I think part of it was, I think, I'm just harkening back to the neighborhood model, and it was one of the, one of the 12 principles, clear boundaries of the rural areas. And that, that's my assumption of why that basically was there.
Okay. Got it. Thank you, Tanya.
So I still, I, I wonder whatever happened to the village of Ravanna, which is one of those areas which is a development area. So there was, it's one of those places that it's sort of like Atlantis. You know, it sort of exists on the maps of the county, but I don't believe anything of any substance that would make it a development area is ever going to take place there. You know, I'm always willing to be proved incorrect. However, I also live in a place of, it ain't going to happen during my lifetime. So maybe it'll happen in yours, Michael. And so there's this whole idea that we've put out from the previous, the, the previous comp plan, a set of ideals and probably that where we went from 48 to 28. And then we have this, like this, you know, this appendix over there that is not living into its use as, as, as part of the development area, but yet we can't do anything in the areas that have started doing something to reconcile that. You know, it's like, I'd, I'd like us to be able to say, I'll give you the village of Ravanna as a rural area if you give me some X amount, some X amount in the Jewett-Ryle area.
Yeah, right. Central Virginia monopoly.
Yeah. Oh, perfect, perfect. It's like we're frozen, you're not frozen. It's like the organization is frozen in this space without sort of taking into, without wrestling, wrestling hard with the fact that decisions that were made in the 2015, nothing's happened there. You know, you weren't here for it, Michael, but let me tell you, the village of Ravanna, it ain't going anywhere. It, it is just not good. And so for us to have to reserve that as part of the development area, as, as having that hat on it, I, I feel, I feel unnecessarily bound by that decision where we could just trade it off and go do something else.
Let me just check in with staff. So we're half, over halfway through our work session. How are we doing? Are we halfway through our presentation or are we?
Not quite.
Okay, let's, let's roll.
We've got some good, I think a lot of this conversation will come up again when we start talking about the utilization review, too.
Right.
I will keep going. So there are a variety of tools that we can use to implement the growth management policy, including revising current land use designations through area plan updates, which we'll talk more about these in a few minutes. Secondly, we can invest in infrastructure and amenities to catalyze and support development and activity centers. We can update our zoning ordinance to support high-quality, mixed-use, dense development and variety of housing types. And lastly, we can expand the development area boundaries. But first, we need to know where we stand on the actual buildout and land capacity of the development areas. While the most recent land use buildout analysis in 2020, in 2022 indicates there is sufficient capacity to accommodate projected growth over the next 10 to 20 years, this hinges on projects building at the high end of recommended density and intensity of uses. In the past, we know that rezoning projects, for example, have been built to 58% of the maximum recommended density per the future land use category. This makes monitoring the capacity of the development areas to accommodate projected growth and demand is a key component of long-range planning and implementing the growth management policy. So we're proposing a development areas utilization review that happens every two to three years so we can monitor the actual buildout and capacity. This review comes in the form of our land use buildout analysis and will include the factors listed on your screen and will help us determine when adjustments are needed using the tools mentioned on the previous slide. We can go through each one of these factors before we dig into the land use tools. This would be another good bite-sized chunk to chat.
In the document, there's an F, which I was glad, glad to see. How was the development and the development areas meeting the objectives of the comprehensive plan? And F seems to be missing in development area utilization review.
That was human error, but yes, that, that F should be included.
And, and for the record, I actually think F is the most important of these criteria. F should be A. And I'll give you an example. I mentioned this before. When we look at the city of Charlottesville. When we look at the city of Charlottesville, for a long time, there was a lot of discussion about Charlottesville being landlocked. The whole justification for annexation was that if Charlottesville couldn't seize parts of Amarillo County, then, then it would stifle and decay and disappear. And actually, the reverse was happening because Charlottesville could very easily take growth area out of, out of Amarillo's hands. The downtown mall was suffering and, you know, it was, there was rot at the core of Charlottesville as it was continuing to expand outward instead of focusing on really quality development inside. And so once it was clear that, that the resources were limited, some of the things that, that we didn't see before, when I was a kid, there were very few sidewalks. There were no bike lanes. There definitely wasn't underground parking garages. You know, walkability, you know, there wasn't redevelopment going on in Charlottesville. Now that those greenfields are exhausted and they've had to live within their means, you have that high-quality development. And I think that's what F gets to. And so that's why I think F really needs to be A.
Point taken. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Any other general comments on this?
I do. My main comment here really, and it's for sort of all of them, is that there's not any clear benchmarks. It's not sort of a, you know, when we reach this number of, of, for whichever benchmark it is, that's when it's time to start identifying places. It's just sort of, here's things we're going to monitor, but there's no action in there. There's no, now we, now we take the action. And I mean, I think voices could, could basically always justify never it being enough. Like there's no goalposts set there. They're not even moving. It's not even set up. So that's my comment about sort of all of them. I was also sort of curious about why the ratio of, of dwelling units being built in the rural area versus development areas matters in today's context.
I think it's that, that view of where are we absorbing our, our, our units and that are being built and our growth is a primarily, it should, you know, primarily be in the development areas, but there are still development rates within the rural areas currently.
So would that mean that like a high, high percentage of, of new units going into the rural areas would mean that we should expand development area? Or what, what does that mean?
I think it means that we look at those tools that we have in, on the previous slide. Can we use one of those, a combination of those to encourage that growth to, to happen in the development areas? Because there's a reason that that's not happening in the development areas that we need to examine to the best of our, our ability.
So that gives me another question. And, and this gets, gets to something about the entire title of this. It says development area utilization review. And the, and the way that this is, this conversation is very centered around the development areas in that that is clearly a rural area objective. I mean, it's, it's about maintaining. So, you know, I think there's this tendency to see the rural areas as blank space that we can just write our name on. And I think that the, the thing here that is that it's, it's not blank space. There's, there's people that live there. There's, there's, there's farms. There's historic resources. There's natural resources. And it, and really the expansion of the development areas, what happens, to be clear, is going to be reduction of the rural area. So I mean, if we just flipped it on its head for a moment and the rural area, you know, someone came to us and farmer stood up here and said, hey, listen, we're running out of farmland in Amarillo County. Can we expand the rural area to accommodate more farms? How, how would we think about that discussion? So I think really rethink, rethinking this is not just as development area utilization review, but in thinking about the uses as a whole of the county and that negotiation between the rural area and the development area.
Let me ask you a question. You guys could be.
Can you remind me the percentage of the land that is in the rural area?
25.
Yeah. That's a, that's, it's, it's 19 to one.
Well, yeah, but there's, there's a, there's reason for that.
I know. Yeah, it should be a larger number. I know.
One, just, just one thing, I'll, you roll a sec. Just to focus everyone there. The question that was posed to us at the beginning, are the draft factors for monitoring development areas appropriate? So I think that's a question is, are there areas missing? Do we see anything missing here that should be considered? Or are these, are there any inappropriate categories that have been raised?
With the addition of the, the F or A.
Yeah.
So apologies for that.
No, I, I think in general they are. I mean, there's, there's a couple of things, how you actually, going back to my measure, how you actually, you know, measure some of this. I mean, I remember early on in, in the, in the conversation of, of the AC44, we were talking about why were we leaving so much density on the table, you know, not, not being able to actually get there. And, you know, that we've got several good, good reasons why. I mean, some of the economy, it wasn't there. Can you build taller buildings? And we just saw that recently where we, we were saying, hey, why don't you go taller? From an economic standpoint, I didn't feel that it was there. And so how do we incentivize some of that? So maybe that's something that I'm not seeing here. There's one thing I would say is, how can we do better to incentivize density in, in infill properties or, or properties that, that are in the development area? That, that have the infrastructure around, even within the development area, all, all, all parcels are not equal, right? I mean, there's some that, that could really take more density because they have the infrastructure. And there's some that are still probably lacking infrastructure. It will be difficult to try to put a very high-dense community or development. So maybe that's something I'm not seeing here is how do we perhaps incentivize that, that development to make sure that we're maximizing at, at minimum, I think, maximizing what the zoning.
Can I riff off of that for a second? So, because I had the same, same thought. So thinking about that reactive versus proactive approach, right? This, there's the assessment, there's the, we're, what, what are we doing or how are we doing? And then there's the reaction, right? Like, okay, well, we're not doing great in this areas, but we're doing great in this area. So then there's the, what now do we do with that information? And I don't know if that gets baked into here in any way, but whether it's incentives, to use your point, whether it's, you know, I don't know, whatever it would be that would help to achieve a better density ratio in the residential areas based on zoning patterns that we've seen. You know, just having heard so many times, can't you guys go higher? Can't you go taller? Can't, you know, all of those things. So I think just thinking about that, what if, what do we do if these don't meet this? And then the second thing is, you know, as we look at this, to ask ourselves, why aren't we meeting the density requirements? And there's an element of, is there something the county should be doing to be tied to the development realities of this world, right? So if a developer is coming to the table and they're like, ah, we can get 1,400 units of housing in this. And we did a conceptual plan and it looks like it's going to be great. And we want that kind of capacity. They're going to try to push the envelope as much as possible because they want to create as much flexibility in their ability to bring housing units to the market. So they're going to create as much capacity, as much flexibility as possible. When in reality, they may be like, gosh, if we get half that, we'll be in great shape. So I think that's where we gotta, we gotta be tone, you know, zero in a little bit on, and I don't know. I mean, we can't see the pro formas of the developers. We can't look at all of those. But having some wisdom that could come from, you know, the county's development assessment or market analysis might provide some helpful information.
So we'll say, and I don't know if we're going to get to later on, I don't think we do. But looking at growth versus net and in, in terms of the buildable, buildable area, I think that's, that's, that's an important step that we can take towards, towards maximizing. But I would say that what we're leaving on the table, my recollection is that it's a significant percentage of what we could be doing. And so I do think that we got to find out, find a way and, and, and maybe it belongs in this section, but it's some type of incentives to, to try to look to maximize that, that density as much as we can.
If I may, then I think really what we're talking about, if there's a, an additional, maybe a G to come to what you're saying, is what is the county's role in maximizing density?
Yeah.
And I, and I believe that there's a piece here, I don't know where it is, but you talked, you did this interesting equation. Somebody did this interesting equation that the land plus the existing structures are less than the potential market price or, or market opportunity.
Yeah.
Then, you know, how do you convince people to do that? And you know, the reality is we have to say if this is really a, a functioning market and people have said my land plus the building on it is not, is not pushing me to do that. It's not pushing me to convert. So you have, if we have a, a free market, then the question then for me became, okay, as we use sort of the ag-forestal stuff to keep that land in a particular posture and we give up taxes there to keep it in a posture, why isn't there a compliment for encouraging property which is underdeveloped to develop more? Because if that's, that, that's the, that's the, that's the opposite of what we're doing in, in, in the ag-forestal thing. When we're saying, we'll give you a tax break if you leave it like this, or they come to us and we say, yeah, we'll give you a tax break. Why isn't the county then trying to rebalance that? Because that's a net, that's a net reduction in, in, in income to the county when that, when that happens. Why isn't the county just also then coming in and saying, you know, you've got this piece of property here with a really, really kind of crummy, that's not crummy, that's Julian saying is crummy, with a really underperforming building over here. How about if we come alongside of you and help you to maximize that and help the county over some X amount of time? That's, I think, the thing what you're talking about. How does the county actively get involved and sort of signaling that this is, that's a, that's a, that's a community good.
Yeah, that's, that's a level of awareness that the county brings rather than a reaction to what they're hearing from the market.
And I, I think there's another piece to this too, which is, I mean, maybe this is another metric that should be on here is the amount of unused surface parking or, or if that matter, buildings that are not at the, at the height they could be. And, and it didn't look like the analysis, the way it was done adequately took that into place. And, and, and I, the example that I'd like to use is Riley Hill Shopping Center. Because if we look at the formula that was provided there, the, the land value is, is less than the improvement value. So that would have been excluded from redevelopment if, if I understood that, that correctly or was reading that. But if you look at that from space, it's mostly empty parking. You could very easily, if we had an incentive, for example, to build structured parking, parking, we could drop a parking garage in there and you'd open up area for development that we now have excluded in our analysis of, you know, of this for, you know, as potential for redevelopment. So, you know, I'd like to see, you know, explicit ways that we can look at using TIF or other strategies to unlock redevelopment. You know, it, it'd also nice be to see a net, it'd be nice to see a map of these areas that we've designated as this is, can't be redeveloped and this can be. Because I have some questions about where that's really true or not.
Yeah, I think that gets to, so your example of parking is one of many that you could look at, right? Like, so, and then asking that question as part of what the county can do, asking that question, what is it that's limiting development? What are those areas? Is it restrictions on wetlands? Okay, well, that's okay. Or is it, you know, too much of a, I, I mean, asking for too much parking related to something that doesn't necessarily provide, those kinds of things. What's taking up property that otherwise could be developed? Like extra parking requirements, like four per thousand. When you have a lot of people who are working from home now, maybe you look at reassessing what a requirement would be for a commercial building.
Even, even Chair, I wouldn't even say they're working from home. The way people shop is, has changed.
Yeah, there you go. Another good example.
It's changed. It's fundamentally different.
Thank you. Okay, Tanya. Keep rolling.
Great. Great discussion. Let's talk about land use tools. Our two major land use tools that influence the effectiveness of the growth management policy are the future land use categories and how they're applied to the future land use map or FLUM and the activity centers. Other tools will be included in the comp plan recommendations such as updates to the zoning ordinance for development in the development areas and encouraging the use of conservation easements in the rural area. We brought these to you as concepts last fall. Tonight, we'd like to preview the consolidated land use categories, how they're applied to the map and the activity centers. These are the same materials that will be presented to, at the public meeting Wednesday, October 30th, as well as to the board on the
Sixth.
On the sixth. Thank you.
November.
November 6th. We'll review these in more depth in, in two weeks. We are coming back to you on the 22nd, I believe is the date. So we'll talk about these in more depth. Just really wanted to preview these and get your initial questions. The future land use categories and map and the activity center, centers support the objectives of their growth management policy. They're also intended to foster the desired features of the development areas, which are based on best practices and community input and include housing, transportation choices, a variety of land uses, walkable neighborhoods, parks and amenities. Future land use categories provide recommendations for future land uses and the general form and scale of future development. They are used during the review process for rezonings and special use permits, as you're well aware. As part of the consistency with the comprehensive plan review, future land use categories are applied to a future land use map or FLUM with different colors for each category. These uses are recommendations for development. They are different than zoning districts and the zoning ordinance, which has requirements for development that must be followed. The current comprehensive plan has over 20 land use categories across five area plans. Those plans are Places 29, Southern and Western, Pantops, Croze and the Village of Ravanna. Many of the categories are similar with slightly different names and recommendations. They overlap and the number of categories can make administration and clarity challenging. So one of the anticipated outcomes of AC44 is having a consolidated and updated set of standard future land use categories that are applied across the development areas in a matching approach. This is intended to stand, standardize the designation of categories on the future land use map and provide needed clarity. The 11 future land use categories can be organized into the following general sections, primarily residential, mixed-use, commercial employment and institutional and public uses. The future land use map shows how those proposed categories, 11 plus three legacy categories, are applied across the development areas. For example, the, the matching approach was applied to currently designated urban residential properties will still be urban residential. More significant changes such as changing a property from urban residential to community mixed-use would typically be done as part of an, an area plan update. This is our first draft we've shared of an updated FLUM. And in phase two, we shared these draft future land use categories. Your packet includes detailed descriptions for each land use category and how the current master plan designations translate and apply to the proposed future land use map. We'll talk about these more in our next session in two weeks. And I'll move on to activity centers. Unless, I, I can pause.
Do you go back?
Yeah, of course.
I can't help myself with maps.
Yeah.
Be careful. So, so did I hear you correctly that this has been updated?
This is the, this is the proposed map.
This is the proposed.
This is the proposed map.
You can see what we're trying to do here is you've got all these different districts that were created before. So we're trying to match up as much as we can.
Yeah.
We've got a couple of resident residue ones. You see the three at the bottom of the slide. Downtown Croze was kind of hard to put into a, a new category. It was very specific. We had these very low ones that were in Village Ravanna and one little portion of Croze. And then Village Shinner at Ravanna, again, similar to downtown Croze. So Fred, what you're looking at here is an attempt on our part to consolidate all of those into a, to a map.
We'll have more time to look, look through this, I'm sure, right?
Yeah. And I think one thing we recognize is that, you know, as we come back and do small area plans, we may continue to tweak these things a little bit more, but this hopefully is a reflection of what was in the previous plan to now. Our intent has not been to massively change. Our intent has not been to massively, uh, change some of the, the previous stuff that, that people are accustomed to now. That, that we see is a vehicle of a small area plan. So.
I was gonna say, I'm assuming you've taken the area plan like, you know, Pantops, where you've taken those master plans and area plans and then that, that's what makes this up. So it's the land use that was developed through those, through those processes.
Yeah.
Correct.
So it's combined in, in.
Into this map. Correct.
Yeah, a- a- again, it's not our intent to sort of change what was done in previous small area plans.
Yeah.
And we, we sort of view the, this step we're in right now as a consolidation. And if you want to change what the colors are on the map, our recommendation is do that with a small area plan, not at this scale.
Oh, not at this scale.
Well, I mean, this, this is a compendium of all of those small area plans, right?
So, so, so let me just help me intellectually understand, when we talk about overlays, how do we get to sort of those broad overlays? Because it would seem that in, in, at some point, perhaps not now, and I appreciate that. At some point, there may be space for broad overlays to come into places that would then give a potential developer the opportunity to think if I do this here, I might get some credits for doing a mixed, uh, a middle, a middle residential in what is basically now a single family, was basically most of it's a single family. So how, you know, while, while we wouldn't, while we wouldn't necessarily wholesale change, in a wholesale way, change the map. But we might say, this is an area that possibly could be, I'm trying to get you comfortable with what I'm saying. Could possibly be considered if a developer would have come in and to purchase. You know, for instance, like, like Home Depot did for Fashion Square. Suppose for Home Depot came into Fashion Square and said, you know what? We're going to put our thing there, but we really would like to put some housing here, particularly in the back, so it's not on 29. Could we have, could, what would it take for the county to say, yes, you can do a mystery middle there? Which, because it would, it would, it would look well with the stuff that's, it would work well with the stuff that's across the road there.
I just would say, remember, your comp plan, land use designations on the map are not the same thing as a zoning map.
I understand that. I, I do understand that.
And so we do allow for, as you read through these categories, there is flexibility to maybe achieve some of the things you're talking about. But if you want to change a certain area to a, a different, a mixed use zone or something like that. That's what we're sort of recommending. We think it's best to, to deal with that in the context of a small area plan. And we'll also be looking at transportation and, and a lot of other things, a lot of other factors that really undergird this, the, the form and development that you may want to approve in a small area.
I was just thinking about how, what, what Fred said that he's got and, and what Lisa said, that they read this thinking. And this is going to be the thing that I think is going to get a first pass before somebody goes into our zoning.
Right.
This is going to be the thing that says, oh, look, yeah, you know, you might be able to do something like this here. So that's, that's the only reason I was sort of raising that up and.
I just wanted to, so my, my comment was just to make sure that I was understanding. I mean, you guys didn't make this up now as you were doing the updates. This came from all of these area plans and master plans too. So I just wanted to make sure that we all have clarity on that.
And moreover, there's a table in your packet where we tried to sort of like say, hey, these other ones we sort of like, because they, they could be very nuanced, but the nuances are, uh, not significant. And so, and I think what happened is, is over time, as, as different areas were going under small area plans, they created a different district to sort of do that without sort of like stepping back and thinking, whoa, wait, we're getting a lot of.
And there was a public process to all those area plans and engagement with the public.
So we're trying to respect that.
All that is consistent with.
And I want to just emphasize too, I do appreciate how, um, you've taken and, and really just, this is more of like a, here's reflecting present reality in one coherent way. Um, and that's, that's legit and I appreciate, uh, the effort in doing that. I think, uh, you know, some of the densifying conversation we were having is sort of like, we're like forward looking, we're like, how do we do more? How do we do more? You know, and so I think that's where some of the pushback has been coming from. It's like, this is really reflecting, let's pull together this really wild patchwork of things into a document. Uh, whereas I'm, I'm hearing from not just myself, but some others, you know, it's like, and, you know, how do we change it forward?
Well, some of this, I think, already has some of that forward looking because it is those small area plans looking at, well. So you may not have some of these areas as developed as today as.
Yeah, I, I noticed a couple, yeah, a little small spots.
Yeah, and, and I, I sort of appreciate that mentality too. There's, there's a lot of yellow on this map that, that I wish wasn't there. Um, you know, which cycles back to a previous thing, you know, we talked about, you know, redevelopment of underutilized spaces. And I see those, those yellow areas as areas that are, you know, ripe for redevelopment, too, particularly older neighborhoods. And I wonder how we do those small area plans, if we can find ways to bring that conversation home and set that as a goal. Um, because I know some of those, those areas, you know, lack infrastructure that newer neighborhoods have. They may not have sidewalks. They may not have other things that newer neighborhoods have. And, and if we could find a way to characterize that conversation in a way that this is infrastructure that if someone was to provide mixed use in this area, that we could, we could provide this infrastructure as part of that. That, that could be a condition of that redevelopment of that area. And I think that would make it a lot more appealing to the people in those areas to say, ah, you know, if someone puts an apartment building here, then, then maybe we get sidewalks finally. We've been looking for sidewalks for years. And I think that that's, that's what I really like to see out of this kind of process. Um, and also mention too, that one of our eagle-eyed residents of Crozay noticed that the Montclair stream buffer is still not on this map. Um, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Welcome, Commissioner Firehawk. Good to see you. All right. Any other quick comments before we keep rolling? Yep, 13 minutes left.
I think I can get done in 13 minutes.
Not you that I'm wondering.
So activity centers are places that have a variety of businesses, services and housing options, either now or in the future. They help identify core areas of higher intensity mixed use development, which also helps to prioritize infrastructure projects and investments. There are four center place types. Each acts like a land use overlay, a land use overlay, providing additional guidance for development along the underlying, along with the underlying future land use categories. There are 30 draft centers proposed with AC 44. This is a consolidation of the 50 centers currently in the five area plans. Many of these centers are small and not currently of anticipa-, um, are not currently or anticipated to be mixed use. This consolidated set of centers helps focus development and public projects. Centers were identified based on existing development patterns, known planned development projects, recommendations in the area plans and estimates for current and future job housing totals. There are four types of the centers in the development areas. The regional, employment, community and local. Those are all in, um, I've listed those from higher intensity and density to lower. On the right, you can see how the different land use tools fit together to implement the objectives of the growth management policy. You see the, the activity centers overlaid on the land, on land use, and that's the Pantops area. The land use categories and map create a base for recommendations. Then in key locations, activity centers are applied as an overlay, as I mentioned. In your packets is a center's quick guide that gets into the details of the expected features of each type, along with the map on the left that shows a total, the total of 30 centers across the development areas. And you really get to see, uh, start to see the distribution of those different types. Wanted to close with, um, the upcoming events and when we'll be back in front of you to talk about several different topics. So we're here tonight talking about growth management policy and the development area utilization review. Give you a little preview of the land use tools. Um, we're going to the board on the 16th to discuss the same topic. And then we'll be back to, to talk in more depth about the land use tools with you on the 22nd and the board on the 6th. We're doing the community info session on the 30th. And we will be going, um, we will be coming back to you in November to talk about the, uh, the development area land use goals, objectives and actions, part of the chapter, the board as well. And then in this, in early November, December, we'll be talking and focusing about on the rural area land use policies. Both have a community session probably early to mid, um, November and coming back to y'all in December. With that, I think that's it. So if we'd like to, we can go back to the, the questions if you'd like to revisit those or any other parts of the process.
So do you, do you have any more? So, so do we have specific dates for some of those community engagements yet? Or is that something you're working on?
It, we're, we are working on the November dates. We need to find, make sure we have rooms and availability for specific dates.
Okay, yeah, it'll be great to get that as soon as you have.
Yeah.
I'll just say that, um, because there's going to be so much going on over the next several months between the planning commission and the board related to this, from a communication standpoint, it would be helpful when we talk, I don't know, maybe it's item eight or item nine on our current agenda, which is AC 44 update. Just getting a little bit more insight into what the board said specifically on the last chapter that we reviewed as a work session. Just so we can kind of keep it tight and, and understand as.
Feedback loop.
Feedback.
Yeah, that'd be really helpful, I think.
Get in there.
Any other comments, questions, uh, or requests to go backwards?
I just have a location.
Yeah.
Where's Riverbend Shopping Center? As one of the centers?
Oh, oh, sorry, that is the Pantops.
Um, that's.
Where we have the, where the food, the food line down and.
Down the bar. That's Riverbend, I was, oh, because of the community behind it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks. It's like, oh, really?
Y'all consider the airport an employment center?
The airport is an interesting thing. It's, uh, has its own management plan and that's something we're going to like. You'll see in the community facilities, kind of wrestled with that one. Do we call it out as its own land use as airport? Or do we sort of speak to its underlying industrial?
I see. Okay, it's just grouped with North Fork Research Park. I just was curious as to why that was the case. That's fine.
I just had a quick question on the employment centers. Um, I just, in the forum site and design guidance where it says two to four stories up to six by additional consideration. I guess my comment would be why are we, why are we limiting it to four and only up to six by additional consideration? I feel like we definitely have places we could go taller and if we want our centers to be successful, then people need to be able to work and identify, you know, have enough client base to support restaurants and shopping and all those other things.
So, um, good question and maybe a good thing to, to do. Um, let me just ask that, we're going to come back with this whole chapter. Part of what we were trying to do here, Karen, was to, this stuff's going out with the public right now. And we wanted to make sure that you knew that these are some major concepts that are going out to the public so that you and the board know if a constituent comes up to talk to you, but what are they talking about with employment centers? You at least know what we, what we're saying when we say employment center. As far as the, the, the numbers and all that stuff, I would ask, maybe we get into that specifics over the next couple of work sessions that we'll be having with you on the development land use chapter.
Okay, and I'm happy to do that. I mean, I would say that that's an overarching comment I had with a number of the, the stories not being as high as what this commission talked about and then also the density that we want to get to. Make it as easy as possible for the development community to build to the density that we want. Because as we've reported over and over again, we're not, we, we have our little density range, but we're not getting, we're getting half of that.
Yeah.
Or less than half of this.
And I just.
They've been getting clobbered with the density, uh.
Yeah.
Mal at all.
I just like to breeze in at the end.
Yeah, no, no, that's good.
I would just, not to be punching Judy, that they'll come back at an appropriate time when we can do that puppetry.
Yeah, that's right. That's, we're here for you. Um, no, I was just gonna say, just remember though, that this is kind of important because one of the things we're hoping to do is to use this as a basis for a new zoning ordinance. So as we talk about these things, it does, you know.
Right.
Comp plan can sometimes just be considered a game plan, but in this case, it'll be also a template for what we want to try to do with the zoning, which is really the rules of the, of the, of, of the road.
I just like to see it go farther.
I, I think, you know, we, we talked about this in different areas, but we, we're talking about it at a high level, right? We're leaving a lot of density behind. How do we, this is a specific way of how do we look at maximizing that density rate? So how do we go from the high level, uh, goals to then very tangible ways of achieving it to then the measurable ways that we can look at, are we achieving these goals?
Yeah, just one thing on that, then I know Mr. Murray has a also point on page seven at the bottom. These metrics should be reported to the Board of Supervisors for their review and consideration every two years or as requested beginning in 26. Pretty specific. Um, I just would, I think what you're hearing is that the metrics themselves, the measurements, the metrics should be, I think should have some discussion, right? Just so that we can think through that, so. Thank you, uh, Commissioner Murray.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I'd second that. Um, the, the other thing I'll point out too is, you know, as we look at this and it says rural area land use policy. I would hope to see when we, we get to that point, this future land use key, that we have a, a similar sort of chart for that, for the rural areas. Um, some of these, these things in here, for example, industrial exists in the rural area. Um, but they, they should be characterized very differently. Um, I would hate to see someplace like the Nancy Mills that provides a rural industrial use um, to just be treated the same way that we treat urban industrial. Um, so.
Great. So now with three minutes left, I'll ask staff, did we answer your two questions clearly enough?
I believe so. I, I think that we've got what we need, um, and we can give feedback to, uh, the board when we're there in, in two weeks.
Okay. Great. All right. Well, thank you. With that, I will send us to recess until six o'clock, uh, at which time I'll see everybody back here. Thank you. Uh, good evening again. I will reconvene the, uh, October 8th meeting, uh, 2024 meeting of the planning commission and, uh, ask for a roll call, please.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Missile.
Here.
Mr. Karazana.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk.
Here.
And Mr. Vivins.
Here.
And Mr. Clayburn is absent again.
Great, thank you. Um, we have already addressed the consent agenda. Thank you. So I will move us on to entertaining any public comment on matters pending before the commission but not listed for public hearing on the agenda. Are there any comments that would like to be shared? Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Please state your name and general area of residence for the record.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Janie Holbrook Whitehall. Um, are we good? Yep.
Yep.
I spoke in June about Eastern Avenue and Project Heron in Crozay. As of August, Eastern has a new incarnation under the Public Private Transportation Act. And I really hope that a P3 will be successful. But there are many risks along the critical path from a finding of public interest to completion of the bridge. My first concern is a roughly $5 million gap between 17.3 million in county funding and the 23 million cost estimate Lance Stewart mentioned at a Springtown Hall. Will credible bids even be received? Secondly, the Kimley Horn evaluation of regulatory risk was based on their own bridge design. The Collins engineering design for Project Heron was not evaluated, but shortened the bridge by contributing 33,000 cubic feet of dirt. Costs go down when the bridge is lower and shorter, but will VDOT approve a thrill ride descent from preserved slopes to the bridge? Will FEMA approve that much fill to support a roadway? What other issues will arise with an unknown design? When you are soon asked to approve Oak Bluff, isn't it reasonable to either wait until Eastern is actually a reality or to recommend three units per acre to reduce the impact on safety and traffic in the community? Crozay has seen plans for infrastructure vanish before, and let me present a case study. Ms. Schaefer has distributed some visuals and I'll go through them very quickly. Exhibit one, Eastern Avenue has been in county plans for decades. Developers were to fund the construction. East Crozay covers a large geop- geography and a lot of people. The eastern extension north to three notched would provide an alternative to Crozay Avenue for many, many trips. Exhibit two shows a possible route for Eastern along the edge of what is now Glenbrook. Instead of granting an easement, the site plan stubbed out Eastern into a known hazardous waste site. The road became impractical, to quote Mr. McDermott. Exhibit three, several years after Eastern to three notched became impractical, the county commissioned a Crozay transportation study and consultants seemed to believe that Eastern to three notched was still an essential part of the plan. Signs still announced the future road. Exhibit four, before the ink was dry on the transportation. Exhibit four, before the ink was dry on the transportation study, the Croze master plan was published without Eastern to three notched. The traffic study has not been corrected and it is still used to guide decisions for Croze. This Eastern to three notched example illustrates why my neighbors and I are concerned about the extension south to two fifty. A finding of public interest is not tantamount to completion of the road and bridge. Only when the critical steps in the process are complete, bids and regulatory approvals are received. Funding is assured and the bridge is well underway. Then and only then will the built potential of Oak Bluff at maximum density be reasonable. And so, thank you.
Thank you for those thoughtful comments. Look forward to studying those. Are there any other comments? Yes, sir. Evening.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. Uh, my name is Mike Carisi. I'm a former Whitehall and Greenwood resident. Right now I'm a city resident. I'm here to speak on behalf of Livable Seville. If you're not familiar, Livable Seville is an active all volunteer group of city and county residents that advocates for land use, housing and transportation policies in Charlottesville and Almaron. We believe that vibrant communities provide all kinds of housing for all kinds of people in all kinds of places. In the spirit of the county's mission to enhance the well-being and quality of life for all community members. We hope you'll consider these five high-level recommendations for this next phase of the AC forty-four process. First, we hope you'll make changes to permit and promote much more housing to be built in the development areas, especially in the urban ring. So more people can live closer to their jobs, their schools and amenities. This can be accomplished through making missing middle housing easier to build in existing residential neighborhoods. While also increasing allowed densities on the few remaining greenfields and other areas with potential for mixed-use redevelopment. Second, please allow much more housing to be built by right and limit the scope and instances of discretionary review as much as possible. Requiring onerous discretionary review processes, especially for the very projects that can produce the most units. Doesn't just create uncertainty for developers, it drives prices up while driving down the actual number of units produced. Third, we hope you'll develop a comp plan that will help residents reduce their dependence on automobiles. The success of the county's investments in public transit, pedestrian, bicycle and ADA infrastructure. Depends on allowing denser land use patterns in the areas closest to job schools and amenities. Fourth, please consider recommending limited targeted expansion of the development areas specifically with the aim to avoid more sprawling growth. When the need for expansion comes, it will be possible to both protect rural areas and promote more housing. Close to existing activity centers. For just one example, in the vicinity of Barracks West, a twenty unit per acre development in this currently rural area. Would be less than a ten-minute bike, bus or car ride from Barracks Road Shopping Center. Finally, an essential part of achieving Almaron's housing goals is expanding affordable housing options. That's one thing I wish I'd heard a little bit more of earlier. We hope the county will increase affordable housing funding, funding to a minimum of ten million dollars a year, just like the city of Charlottesville is doing. To help the thousands of current and displaced county residents who cannot afford market rate housing. Possible uses for this fund include preserving existing affordable housing, uh, like Cavalier Crossings, Mossai Apartments. Other, uh, developments that are leaving Lytec. Increasing levels of rental assistance and creating new affordable housing units. Thanks for your time. Appreciate all your work.
Thank you. Perfect timing, by the way. Great. Um, with that, uh, is there anyone else who'd like to speak in the audience? If not, anybody online?
I don't think so. No.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Um, we will now then move to items requesting deferral to a new date. And that is, uh, SP two thousand twenty-four dash twelve, City Church. Um, I will need a motion. It looks like the item is being requested for deferral to December tenth, twenty twenty-four, the date specific. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Good.
And again, I'm assuming that's a motion to defer to December tenth.
I moved to defer this item until, uh, the December tenth meeting of this body.
Great. And we have a second. Any discussion? All right. Could I hear the roll, please?
Okay. Mr. Bivins.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Mr. Karazana.
Hi.
Mr. Missile.
Hi.
Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, everyone, we'll now move to the public hearings and start with SP twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, UVA. ECU, which I believe is credit union, tier three, personal wireless SF.
Uh, thank you. My name is Kevin McDermott. I'm the Deputy Director of Planning. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to present on this project. This is, uh, SP twenty twenty-four nineteen, UVA Community Credit Union Tower relocation. So this is an application to replace an existing one hundred and fifty-six foot tower with a new one hundred and sixty foot tower. Uh, just, uh, to bear in mind that the height of the tower above sea level actually will remain the same. The only difference is that there's an elevation difference in the, uh, on the land it's going to be built on. The existing tower was proposed, was approved by special use permit in the mid nineteen eighties. Uh, the map you see here shows the location of both the existing and proposed tower. The relocation is proposed because the property is being redeveloped where the existing office building will be, uh, demolished. And a new office building is going to be built. Uh, the project is located in an entrance corridor. A balloon test was conducted and, uh, the highlighted the areas or the, I'm sorry, the highlighted areas in the map. Show where that tower would be visible from those entrance corridors, Fifth Street and I sixty-four, both entrance corridors. So the, this project's unusual because there is an existing tower already there. We can easily verify the visibility impacts. Overall, it is the opinion of staff that the proposed tower has essentially the same impacts as the existing tower. The ARB did concur with this opinion and they have issued a certificate of appropriateness. Uh, as you can sort of see in this photo, the, there will be locations where the proposed tower is visible, but the existing tower is not. Staff did note that there are just as many instances where the existing tower is visible, but the proposed tower will not be visible. Uh, you can barely see the balloons, uh, over the trees where that red arrow is. This is on, uh, Fifth Street going right in front of the county office building heading north. So you can kind of see where those balloons show up above the trees. Uh, in this photo, you can see both the existing tower and the balloons showing the height of the proposed tower. Just highlight that so I make sure you can see it. Uh, these are, this is the balloon right here. So you can see the balloon there. Here is the existing tower. Uh, this is coming off the off-ramp of, uh, I, of Fifth Street and I sixty-four. So the, uh, proposed tower is replacing one that is forty years old. It was actually not originally designed for personal wireless services. And the new tower, uh, will not have any impacts greater than the existing tower. Uh, but it will be designed to meet the current and future telecommunications needs. Staff has reviewed this request for compliance with the zoning ordinance. And our opinion is that it's consistent with the requirements for approval of the special use permit. And therefore we are recommending approval. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott. Any questions from commission?
Yeah, I mean, I only have sort of an observation. It seems that a lot of energy has been put into a five-foot difference. That is no difference because, no different, actual different because of the slope of the land, the elevation. There should just be an easier way to do this, you know?
Seems like it. Yeah. Thanks. I, I apologize for missing something obvious if I did, but in your conditions, it says the maximum height of the tower is a hundred and forty-five feet above the ground level? Is that, that's the, yeah, the, the extra?
Uh, yes, and they're allowed to do, uh, twenty feet above that.
Got it. So that's where you're capturing the extra. Okay. Ten-four. That's right. All right. Thank you. All right. With that, um, I'll open the public hearing and call for the applicant's report if there is one.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'm Valerie Long with Williams Mullen. We are representing the applicant, the UVA Community Credit Union. Thank you. I'm going to maybe skip through a lot of my slides because they're duplicative of some of the ones that Mr. McDermott shared. Feel free to, um, ask me questions about any that I may run through too quickly. I think you're all familiar with this location. Both the existing tower location and the area we're proposing to relocate it to. It's an existing area of parking lot that won't be needed. The credit union, as you may know, is proposing, purchased this property several years ago and is relocating their corporate headquarters to this location. So they're going to demolish the existing building and build a new one, generally as shown on that rendering. This is a marked up set of our plans to just demonstrate the relative location of the existing building from the new building. And as you can see, the existing tower and its distances from various property lines. Um, and then the new tower would be located in this area over here. And this shows the distances to the property lines from the new, uh, location. And generally they are larger, the, the tower will be farther away from just about every corner. Uh, the only, uh, one that is not the case is the northern boundary. Um, it's closer, but it still would be three hundred and fifteen feet away from the northern boundary. The parcel itself is quite large. Much of it is not developable because of floodplain, critical slopes and a stream. Um, this is just an enlargement of the proposed lease area. There's only two wireless providers right now. But we wanted to accommodate future carriers who might want to co-locate on the site. So we don't have to come back and amend the SP again. We are preserving the existing, there's kind of a footpath that leads from the corner of the parking lot down to the playfields. So we intentionally did not want to block that area. We're also proposing some new trees around the base of the ground equipment, which will also be enclosed by a wooden fence. You all discussed this already, but the existing height is one fifty-five. It was approved at one sixty. And as noted, the importance for the wireless providers is that their antennas remain at the same elevation above ground level. Because the new site is ten feet lower, we're proposing a tower at a hundred and sixty-five feet. But again, it will be essentially the same height at the top. And some of these are repetitive, uh, from the balloon test to show you, this is the existing tower looking north, uh, just before the bridge on Fifth Street. This is closer to, um, the site, but, uh, this is the location, the balloon test and a photo simulation. In the next slide, I have kind of a side by side. So again, the left side is the existing tower and the right is a photo simulation of the proposed tower in its new location. And likewise, this is, uh, similar to one Mr. McDermott showed you. May actually be from their photos, uh, coming off the interstate, heading towards Fifth Street. Obviously it's visible from quite a distance down the ramp. The new location, um, is also visible, but not, not as far of a distance on the ramp. Because it's not really a straight visual shot like the existing tower is. And then again, the side by side, you can see the relative similarity and levels of visibility, um, at the two locations. This is existing as you are getting on the north, excuse me, on the ramp heading west. You can see the existing building in the, um, sort of in the back and then the tower behind it. And then this is the proposed, uh, tower in photo simulation in the new location. And likewise, side by side to demonstrate the consistency and visual visibility. This is driving south on Fifth Street towards the interstate. You can see the existing tower. And then the photo simulation demonstrates that the new one is visible. The existing one is just, uh, from this particular vantage point, um, hidden by that tree. And so you can tell there again, very similar visibility. And then finally, from the interstate, the existing tower and then the proposed tower and then side by side. Uh, so that's everything we have. Um, we do ask, and I know there was a question about the height. Um, as Mr. McDermott indicated, um, under federal regulations, after approval, it could be increased by twenty feet. But the existing SUP allows for a hundred and sixty feet. We're proposing to build it at a hundred and sixty-five feet. We would prefer for clarity and record keeping purposes that the tower be approved at the requested height of one sixty-five. So that it's clear for the record, we're happy to indicate that it would not be raised in the future if that would help. But given that it's existing, already approved at one sixty. I think it would be inconsistent to require it to limit its height to one forty-five. Be happy to address that issue more.
Got it.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
I see with your existing building that part of your parking lot actually goes into the hundred-foot buffer of the, the stream. Wouldn't you tear down that building and rebuild it? Or are you going to pull that parking lot out of the stream buffer?
I don't know if any of it's in the stream buffer now. I think the buffer was delineated around it. I can check that the parking lot obviously predates the adoption of the, let me go back to the imaging question. Predates the adoption of the, certainly the preserved steep slopes, which you see there in green and the yellow areas are managed steep slopes. But there is no plan to modify the parking lot at this time.
Great. Any other questions for the applicant?
Did you just, I know you probably said this, but could you remind us how old the existing towers, when was that put in?
It was approved in nineteen eighty-six and I believe installed that same year, maybe early ninety-seven, but it was approved in nineteen ninety-six. Excuse me, pardon me, eighty-six.
Eighty-six.
Pardon me.
And then I'm sure you know this because you've memorized our regulations. What, when, when did, when was our cell tower policy adopted in Almaron? How old is that? I mean, I know it's been decades, but.
The policy, the comprehensive plan component was adopted in December of two thousand.
Okay. So the poll was before that policy.
Correct. The ordinance was first adopted in two thousand and four.
Okay. Thank you. That's.
Sure.
Great. Thanks. Any other questions? Yeah, applicant? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'll open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public interested in speaking to this topic? Being none, anybody online?
No, sir.
Okay. Great. So with that, I will close the public hearing. And open it up for discussion. Who would like to start us off? Anybody? Doesn't seem like there's any, any interest in discussing anything tonight.
I mean, I don't have any interest in discussion, but I'm trying to figure out sort of, we went through this whole season of. Of, uh, the reevaluation, the reimagining of the, of, of the communication towers for the, for, for the county. And I would have hoped, I'm not going to say what I would have expected, but I would have hoped that this kind of what feels very modest. And in fact, since we're going to move to be the exact same size as the one which is there now. Could have been dealt with administratively and not necessarily legislatively, but.
But I had a question about that as well, but my understanding is because it's the, in the entry corridor, right? And that's what.
That's why.
That's what kicks in our, our review.
Um, well, they're, actually, no, the entrance quarter is not what kicked it into this. The, the reason is just because it was not entirely clear what, if the previous special use permit still would apply to this. Uh, and so to be on the safe side, we, uh, are bringing this forward.
Why?
I believe, uh, well, it, that might be a better question for the applicant, actually.
Thank you, Mr. Bivins. The original special use permit was approved for a tower at no taller than one hundred and sixty feet. And we're proposing the height to be one hundred and sixty-five feet, which then. Is obviously different than requires amendment of the special use permit. So. Thank you.
Five feet.
All right. So I thought that it was, if it was in the entry, in the entry quarter, it would, it would still be reviewed. Isn't that the case with our new policy?
Uh, the ARB could still review that, but I don't believe it would have to go through the special use permit. Is that?
They already did.
Yeah, but in the, the other case. Uh, I think the confusion there between the special use permit though, is because of the federal regulations that allow it to go the twenty feet over.
Thank you.
So the applicant has asked that we amend number one to the maximum height of the tower being a hundred and sixty-five feet above ground? Is there any concern with that?
Mr. Chair, I'd recommend that we, for the time being, stick with the conditions as proposed. Again, there's the one-time increase, the two hundred and sixty-five. I, I can certainly work with Ms. Long between now and when this goes to the board. I can certainly work with Ms. Long between now and when this goes to the board supervisors. If she has specific language that she'd like to propose that would make it clear that they're going no higher than 165. My concern is that if the commission were to approve it right now and just substitute 165 for 145, that then there'd be a bump up from 165 to 185. So my suggestion to the commission is if the commission is inclined to recommend approval, let it do so with the conditions in the staff report. And then if Ms. Long would like altered language, she and I can work on that between now and when this goes to the board supervisors.
Thank you. I feel like that came up, that another one had the same issue. Okay, thank you, counsel. All right, would anybody like to make a motion?
It's his district.
My district, but I'm happy for someone else to, or I can.
You can't, he doesn't imply bias in your district.
All right. So I move to recommend approval of SP 2024-19 with the conditions included in the staff report. Any discussion? All right, we have a roll, please.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Mr. Carizana.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Bivens.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks. All right, with that, we'll move on to the next public hearing, SP 2024-2, Midway-Martin Store Power Line Upgrade. Ask staff for the report, please.
All right, thank you once again. Kevin McDermott with the Deputy Director of Planning. This is SP 2024-2, Midway to Martin Store Transmission Line Phase 2. So this is an application to upgrade approximately 2.8 miles of the existing transmission line from Thunder Ridge Road in southwest Alamo County to the Martin Store Substation in Nelson County. This is phase two of the project. The first phase went northward, northeastward from Thunder Ridge Road to the Midway Substation, which is located near the intersection of Midway Road and Miller School Road. The existing 60 to 70-foot wooden H poles are proposed to be replaced with 58 to 82.5 steel monopoles within the existing right-of-way. I want to highlight that we recently learned that there was a mistake in the applicant's narrative that had a different proposed height for those. This height is actually different. It said, it initially said 65, or I'm sorry, 65 to 95 feet, I believe. That's what's in your staff report. They confirmed that is actually, the new poles will be 58 to 82.5 feet. So really substantially similar to the existing H poles. So the steel monopoles will be replaced within the existing right-of-way. And this map shows the location of the transmission line, which does continue into Nelson County to approximately Route 151. The upgrade is occurring because of the existing wooden poles are over 40 years old and showing signs of deterioration. This line serves almost 6,750 customers and the replacement will improve reliability of the system. The petition is for energy and communication transmission facilities under Section 10.2.2.6 of the zoning ordinance. It affects 41 parcels of land totaling approximately 587.9 acres. No dwelling units are proposed. The zoning is rural area and the comprehensive plan recommends this area is rural area. As I said, the proposal is for replacement of existing poles within the existing right-of-way and construction impacts will be limited and temporary. Staff believes there will be no substantial detriment to the adjacent lots. The character of the nearby area will remain unchanged as the new poles are not substantially different from the existing poles. No grading is proposed and vegetation impacts will be limited. The zoning ordinance does provide for public requirements such as reliable electrical service. Public utilities are in harmony and supportive of the agricultural and residential uses throughout the district. And the proposal was evaluated against the applicable regulations found in Section 5 as they relate to public utility structures. And staff believes that they are in harmony. Staff opinion is that the request is consistent with the requirements in the zoning ordinance for approval. And you can see the recommended action and conditions on this slide. With that, I'll take any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. McDermott? No, pretty straightforward. All right, thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing and ask for the applicant's report. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
I know you'll do this, but just please state your name and your general area of residence.
Okay.
Kevin, just give it a second, switch it over.
Had earlier. Nicole's underway, I'm sure.
Can just say enable contact down below.
In the meantime, my name is Charles Ward. I'm the Vice President of Engineering Services at Central Virginia Electric Co-op. And it is my responsibility, my team's responsibility to oversee substation and transmission projects within our service area. Okay, so this is, I think as you said, special permit 2024-0002. This is the vicinity map that shows, as Mr. McDermott put up earlier, from Thunder Ridge Road down to the county line. It is all within the existing easement. There's no other easement needed. Our easement is 150 feet wide. At one time, probably some 40 years ago, there were two transmission lines in this easement. And so one was removed and it left the structures that are there now, which are eight-frame structures similar to this picture here. And this line hugs down the right side of our easement as you move south. So it leaves the very good opportunity for us to move a new line to the center of the easement. So when we get, when we get completed with the project, the new line will be in the center of the easement pretty close. And then we'll go back and we'll remove all these eight-frame structures. It is a radial feed and for, if you don't know what a radial feed is, it's, it has no backup. So when the line goes down, we lose 6,750 customers until we can get it repaired. And we've had several of those problems over the past few years. The wood poles are deteriorating, the crossarms are deteriorating. The crossarms actually are rotting from the inside out. So we don't know that they're bad until they're broken. And then, you know, we have an outage. As was mentioned, the existing pole range is 45 to 70 feet. And Phase 2 consists of approximately 2.8 miles from Thunder Ridge Road down to the county line. Phase 1, which was completed in 2023, it started a little bit over two years ago. And it was replacing 3.4 miles from Midway Substation, which is just north of the Miller School down to Thunder Ridge Road. We had to divide the project up into two phases due to financial manpower restraints. And then the, as I said, the line will be constructed within our 150-foot easement. No other easement will be required. Our easements are maintained and we won't require any cutting of any trees or anything. There may be some trimming of some of the trees, but nothing outside of the easement. Nothing that we wouldn't do ordinarily to maintain service. The transmission line is an upgrade to the poles only. We are replacing the conductor, but it's the same size. So we're not increasing the conductor size. We're just putting up new conductor. What that does, because it is a radial line, it allows us to build in the new line and then at some point, cut it over and make it energize and then tire out the other line. So we are replacing the conductor, but it's the same size. But the poles are being upgraded from wood to ductile iron. And they'll range in height from 58 to 82 and a half feet. That's mainly due because they are going to be a single pole construction as opposed to an eight-frame that you see on the, on the right. Single pole construction looks a whole lot nicer. It does require just a little bit of additional height, but it, it looks very good. If you want to go out there and take a look at the existing line, the 3.2 miles that we've done, it's a nice looking one. So the, the pole line is a little bit over 40 years of age. And like I said, it's just deteriorating. And it serves 6,750 members through four other substations, including the Wintergreen Resort Area and the pumping station, which pumps water up for all of their fire, safety and everything on the mountain. So it's a very important line to, to them and to SEVAC. So the upgrade will increase the reliability to our customers and to the SEVAC system. The ductile iron poles are resistant to woodpeckers, insects, rot, weathered, and the, and they weather natural finish, which is a bare iron. So it's, it looks just like a tree. I mean, when you're looking at it, you can't tell a whole lot of difference from the road. So we understand that you're working on a new comprehensive plan. We're not sure if you got it all in place yet. So it's AC44 and your other one was 2015. So we've addressed both of them here. The transmission line falls within the rural area 3 and it aligns with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, both of them. So this is, I won't read this, but it's consistent with the 2015 comprehensive plan. So it supports the private electric telephone and so forth service to the customers. And, you know, being able to provide that service to customers and the community. And then it's also consistent with the comprehensive plan. And I think this is a draft. I'm not sure if it's been approved yet, but that's all I could find online. Goal 3 and objective 3.6, which is pretty much in line with the same thing as 2015. So the impacts to the public facilities and the public infrastructure. It's in a rural area. It's a mix of vacant residential farmland, hunting property. All right-ofways cleared with a mix of maintained fields. And again, this is just a one-line diagram of the poles. You have your eight-frame on the, on the right and you have your single monopole on the left. No impacts are expected from the proposed project due to it all being performed inside the right-of-way. The majority of the truck traffic that we'll have will be up and down the right-of-way. There will be access points along and we, we work with the landowners and to get the access into the right-of-way. The design will avoid all sensitive areas and all the work will be performed with rubber track vehicles. But we put a lot of design and effort into the, into the design, a lot of effort, a lot of time. This is just a typical drawing that shows the effort and, and design that we put in. You know, it's very detailed. So we take, you know, we even show trees there that, that might be impacted. So it's, it's a lot of work goes into the project. Got a few slides here that shows any streams and ponds along the ways. No major waterways, just mainly small streams and some ponds. Vegetation management. We perform extensive work each year to cut and maintain our right-of-ways. We have 4,500-mile system of lines that we maintain. SEVAC invests more than $2.5 million a year on its vegetation management. And we're proud to be the caretaker of the environment. This is a certificate of Habitat Partners Certificate awarded to SEVAC recognition. Just a little bit over.
Great, now you were perfect. There's red, you're over. Thank you. That was really helpful. I learned a lot. I said, well, any questions for the applicant?
I just have a comment. So first of all, thank you. I used to live in a house that was along the, the route of that, where that power line's going, the upgrade's going to occur over in the Batesville area. And so first, I have to comment on my, the reliability of my power under the co-op was so much better than where I am with Dominion over in Sugar Hollow. So thank you, you all, for all you do. The other thing that I'll say too is I really appreciate that you've, you're taking efforts to minimize herbicide. My wife and I are botanists and a lot of people don't know, but some of the most critically important species of, of rare plants live in those power line right-of-ways. So minimizing herbicides is also important, something that Dominion doesn't do. I've seen a lot of areas with, with very rare plant communities hit with herbicide that are maintained by Dominion. So I, I appreciate.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments?
I had a question.
Okay.
Yes, so this is in my district. You mentioned the 6,750 customers. You did mention, you know, obviously it's going over to Nelson County and helping with critical needs like making sure the pumps at Wintergreen don't fail to put that water up the mountain. Can you just sort of describe the service area of this line? Is it for Admiral?
Describe.
The service area, the geography of the service area. Where are those 6,750 folks?
Yeah, the, like how many customers is in Admiral?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get like, are they in southern Alamo? Are they supposed to go into Wintergreen? Is it?
Yeah, they're, they're in the southern part of Alamo. You know, there's customers all along the line that we serve with our distribution line. Now, the transmission line serves substations.
Right.
They don't serve any particular customer. So they carry the power to the substations and then the substations distribute the power back out to the customers. So this line carries power, it comes from Midway, which brings power down the distribution line to customers all in Alamo County. And then we go to Martin Store, which there's a distribution line that comes back and ties with the Midway distribution line. So it serves customers from, in Alamo County also. So when the line goes out, we do have an outage, it affects a lot of.
There was a big outage recently, a few weeks ago, that was Nelson and Alamo. Everything was out, gas stations, even the brewery was down. Couldn't even console ourselves in the power outage like we have done in the past. So, all right, well, I mean, it is very reliable services. It's gotten much better in the last decade, noticeably so.
Thank you.
Even when my power did go out when I was in Batesville, it was up like that. I mean, it was, I mean, it goes out when I'm in Sugar Hollow. When it goes out, it'll be out for like a week and I don't understand why, but I mean.
These guys are up and down the road constantly.
Oh, it's constantly. Move. Move back to Batesville.
Yeah. Is that a quick question? So this is essentially, it's a potential for backfeeding that line? Is that what it?
Yeah, there's no backfeed for this particular line. We've, we've looked at some backfeed from other areas. Very expensive and, and, you know, just because of the train, you're kind of right up the foot of the mountains. We'd have to come from Colleen and tie back into Martin Store. And that's, that's probably 10 or 12 miles across the hills. So we've looked at it and it's something that's on, on the radar that we're, we're looking at. That improves the reliability, the best way to the customers is to have a backup. Yep.
Great. I just had one, are we done? Sorry. Said one question, curious, I don't know if you can answer this, but the vegetation management plan, how often do you look at that and assess and determine whether it's still appropriate or it needs to be changed? Is there a?
Yearly.
Yearly?
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, I'm not sure, the cycle. I want to say it's a, it's a 10-year cycle for the whole system.
Okay.
So 4,500 miles. So we do like 450 miles a, a year.
I see.
And we use a lot of different methods. Bush hogging, we'll have tree trimming go in. We also use the helicopter that.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah. If you've seen that anytime, that's pretty neat to watch.
That's scary. That's scary. It is. It's very scary. Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, are there any, doesn't look like there are any audience members that are here to speak to this right now? Uh, are, is there anyone online, Madam Clerk?
No.
All right. With that, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commission. Any comments, concerns, or motions?
We're, I think we're all generally supportive of safe power.
Yeah.
And reliable power. Um, I'm prepared to make a motion. I move to recommend approval of S P two oh, two four, four zeros two, with the conditions included in the staff report.
Second. Any further discussion? That could we hit the roll, please?
Okay. Mr. Bivins?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Carizana?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McDermott. Welcome to hang out for the rest of the agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Awesome night.
You too. Thanks very much. Take care. Um, we'll move on to committee reports. Any committee reports from commissioners? Yes, there's.
Yes, so um, so there was a C C A C meeting about um capital projects with Armwell County Schools. And so that was very interesting to see all the different projects that they're engaged, and they talked about the the um new Western Amoral parking lot they just put in for, you know, if you've been out to see that. Um, they talked about some of the things we've heard about, about some of the expansions um of of the high schools, um, you know, adding new units and so forth. So it was it it was great to see all the things that are in the works and that that they're doing.
Uh, I've actually got two reports because we uh didn't have a meeting last time. Um, so the Places twenty-nine Ryo C A C met uh toward the end of September. There is a proposal presumably that'll come our way uh at some point. Um, in Belvedere, they are uh looking for a zoning map amendment to um the original proffer in Belvedere included a one hundred-foot buffer kind of running out, or yeah, buffer running along the railroad tracks for a future road to connect from Rio uh up to uh rather from the Belvedere neighborhood up to Polo Grounds. Um, this would remove that uh and then basically ask for uh the the space to build homes, townhouses. Uh, the developer, who's also the head of the H O A there, um, has asked for uh, has offered to proffer um, you know, the twenty percent affordable units in the homes that they build in that section. Um, also to um kind of build a connector road kind of behind in there to be sort of internal traffic flow facilitation. And then uh also to build a greenway uh that would connect in lieu of a road road, put a greenway to connect the trails up in Still Meadow and along the river.
Oh, yeah, cool.
Uh, either to be maintained by the H O A or maintained by the county, however you want to play that out. Um, there's a lot of commentary, a lot of folks from Belvedere showed up, some were sort of confused and still thought this was proposing a new road to connect, and it's actually the opposite. Um, so staff and the, you know, Bill will figure that one out. Also, on the transportation front, the C T E C met, the Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee. Um, this was just one, and it probably could come from several other committees too, but basically the uh smart, smart scale proposal cost estimates have come in. So one thing of interest, there's only five hundred million dollars available statewide for these larger high priority projects. Statewide, two point three billion dollars was proposed. Uh, so our chances are not awesome on all these. Um, but uh the other thing too is that in some cases, well, so it's a new scoring system, so we don't really know exactly how it's going to play out. Um, one thing that was kind of interesting is how some of these larger districts can bring money to the table. And so then that makes them more attractive. So you've got some Nova projects that are bringing a hundred and fifty million dollars to the table, so they're only asking for seventy, and so that ranks them much higher. But uh, the other thing that was kind of wild to me is that the estimates we submitted are thirty-five percent higher than today's dollars to account for the inflation of how long these things can take at current inflation rates. Um, anyway, long and short, uh, the one that that made me sort of sad was that um, given the price point of the the Rio and Hillsdale Peanut, that sort of people, uh, it may not be such a strong contender, but a few others could still be strong contenders.
Great reports. Thanks.
Oh, one thing I did want to mention that I thought was fascinating is, so the High School Center two um is going to be on a hundred percent geothermal, which i- is also really great to see how our our schools are really committed to sustainability and really set a, set an example for, you know, for the rest of the county in terms of sustainable design.
Mr. Bivins?
Um, at the places, I'm reading it now, so I know where we are, where I was. Places twenty-nine hydraulic C A C. Not the Jack Jewett C A C, which you know is my, shows my own personal bias there. Um, but we had something that hopefully, I'm, I mentioned it the last time, but I think it would be actually if we, if we could, but we heard from uh the Office of Housing and and that's interesting, the House, Office of Housing and the House and the Housing Alboral, um, which I think would be really interesting for us to see because it laid out us, uh, Stacy laid out sort of a lot of data that we probably have not seen. So we saw, we, 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 w- we were engaged in in the early parts and talking about what should the pro- what perhaps should the process be for affordable housing? But I don't believe we've seen how the cow has been actually implemented in the county. And so I I would suggest, I was, I was pleased with what I saw because I didn't know anything. And so it was actually quite refreshing to see that information, but I think it might be helpful as we wrestle with, you know, what are we saying in the comp plan to see how it's actually being, being lived out on a day-to-day play basis? And then that's all, that was like the major thing for that. And when I have the significant question, are we really expected at the all C A C meeting next week? Is that something we're expected to be at?
I mean, I, I've attended in the past. I don't know if you're.
I have, I've too, but given that it's an A C forty-four, we expect it to be there. I mean, I don't know.
I don't know if it's mandatory, but I would think it might be helpful.
Is that, I might have that incorrectly in my calendar. Can somebody update me on where and when that is?
It's um the thirtieth, that will be, it will be on thirtieth, and um be quite honest, I, I don't think you're, you're necessarily expected to be at those, but um.
I mean, in the past, we've been introduced by the Board of Supervisor members that are leading the meeting, if you're there.
And my, my question is that because I'm, I'm over, I'm looking over the monitor at the gentleman over there, that what constitutes a public meeting?
And and so I, my understanding is that that meeting is October thirtieth, so that's between, uh, so we have another regular meeting between now and then. Uh, my suggestion is unless you want to have that noticed as a meeting of the Planning Commission that you all are welcome to attend, you just can't discuss public business there without it, without it being a public meeting.
You mean with each other or with like, say, we are talking to a resident?
You can't dis, you can't discuss the public business with other members of the commission.
Right, but you could talk to somebody in the C I C.
That's correct.
Okay.
I mean, in the past, we've also convened the Planning Commission meeting at the same time as the public.
That, that, that's another alternative.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's perhaps a function of those of us, how many of us show up.
Yeah, and if if it's necessary, we can all sit in different parts of the room. Other stairs, something.
Pretend not to know you.
Sorry. Apparently, it's almost time that. Any other reports? Yes, ma'am. Um, we're going to the fifth and Avon Street.
Well, all right. Um, my re, my report is just that we had a community meeting for the living, a new proposal for the Living Earth School. The location is essentially um behind Walnut Creek Park. If I'm not mistaken, it it's hard to, like, I'm looking on the map and I'm remembering where it was. Um, it seems like a much better um property for that location, and um, it it was a very well-attended meeting. And I think the um applicant did a good job of describing kind of how they plan to use the property, have a relatively light footprint. Anyway, so that will be coming to us at some point to be determined. So that's all I have from the peanut gallery.
May I ask, is this the project that came, that was trying to do something on the Batesville Road at some point in time?
It was that road that was really skinny, where barely two cars could, two cars could not really pass. That dirt road.
Yeah, okay.
It was off of that, it wasn't.
It wasn't on Dick Woods, but it was.
But it was, yes, it was, it was really hard to reach, and and there was um a lot of concern by the neighbors that about the disturbance of having vans going up and down that all at once, dropping off a bunch of kids. So this seems to be a much better proposal from what I saw in that community, like I said, was um not, not so alarmed as the past proposal. So I think that they've, they've thought through a lot of that.
They listened.
Yeah, I will, so anyway, I'm going to go probably look at the site because it just to see how they're laying it out.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Any more committee reports? That, great. How about, um, we'll send it back to Mr. Barnes, review of Board of Supervisors meeting?
Yes, sir. There were two Board of Supervisors meeting since we've last met. On September eighteenth, um, board reviewed the Piedmont Grounds uh management landscape business. If you recall, that was two fifty west. Uh, blank on the name of the store out there at Beaver Dam, maybe it was the name of the store. Okay, thank you. Anyhow, it's closed now. Um, but the uh board reviewed that one and approved that application. Um, interestingly, on the subsequent meeting of October second, um, the applicant, two things happened. First of all, they did receive a presentation from staff on the Ivy Road Corridor project, the recommended project.
Oh, yeah.
And I, we probably should share that with you all for your information. I'll make sure we get that out this week.
These are the transportation improvements?
At this point, it's the, the studies occurred.
Yeah.
And there, but basically, the long and short of it, we kind of looked at, it was a multi-variable calculus problem, you know, each of these little small intersections running from the city line all the way out to um the Boardshead. It was like multiple different things you might do at each intersection, and we worked through that and tried to come up with the best fit for the ones really from um the entrance into the Burbwood Golf Course or the complex there at uh, I guess that's now Boardshead Drive, coming back into the city. And the s- staff, um, you know, in consultation, listening to a lot of stuff with V dot working, it came sort of like, this is the preferred um alignment that staff, B dot, and um, we also had the Ivy Corridor Group, a collection of citizens along that corridor would endorse that. So that was presented to the board, and I will share that presentation with you guys um in the next couple days.
I'd like to have it.
The other thing that was very interesting at this meeting was we have a deferral. Eleven ninety-three Seminole Trail, which was the, it started off as Texas Donut, and we reviewed it a little bit ago. The place right at the city-county boundary where the uh Chinese um grocery store is right next, and the city has a on the joining property, the Bachi Grill.
Right.
Looking at that being redeveloped. Um, the applicant came in and deferred that. Um, the reasons for the deferral weren't completely clear, but I think that was, they're sort of assessing other options, and I think they had mentioned that we might be uh pleased with what they may come back in. I think they're looking at different investments and in, interest rates are falling, and that may change some of the, their investment calculation on that property. So I would just say, stay tuned. Uh, it may not come back to you all. I just give you the forewarning, if it's, if it's substantially similar to what the initial pro- project was, that you all approve, we may just go straight back to the board, but just letting you know about that.
Thank you.
Interesting. Um.
Bon toller.
Yeah, that's right.
Maybe I could buy my hot pot sauce a little longer.
Exactly.
I'll send you a case.
If you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'll just go into the next item more quickly. Yeah. Obviously, we had a pretty lengthy discussion about that tonight, and um, one of the things I want to try and do is, I'm working on a, again, sort of suggesting that a schedule. Uh, try and bring that back to you all, but I do want to say, just a reminder that we do have three meetings this month and three meetings next month. The meetings this month, obviously, we are standard one coming up on the twenty-second. And we will be holding a special joint um city-county meeting on the Resilient Together Initiative on October twenty-ninth. That will be here in room two forty-one.
One thing I'll note on that is there's three and a half hours held on our calendars. I don't know if, just, I don't, I'm not sure it's going to last that long, but there's also a pre-meeting next week, right, to talk through that?
There is a pre-meeting next week with Mr. The Chair on October fifteenth, but.
There's, I just want to make sure, so that, you know, I have the twenty-ninth on my calendar. What were you saying about three weeks? You just meant because we're also having a joint.
Tonight, the twenty-second.
Okay.
And the twenty-ninth.
Got it. I just want to make sure it's not, I'm not missing one.
Twenty-fourth second is also a work session day as well.
Let's start again. Yeah, it's a work session.
That one I had is for, this one I didn't, but I was out of town, so I'm sorry.
And in November, we will again have three meetings. Uh, they will be November twelfth, nineteenth, and twenty-second. And the, all of them will have work sessions.
Sorry, can you say that again? I'm just, sorry.
Twelfth, the nineteenth, and the twenty-sixth, they will all have four P M. work sessions. The first two, we will be talking about A C forty-four. The of the, the third on the twenty-sixth, we'll be talking about form-based code. Um, that's a work, those are all work sessions. We're also, uh, just because I know you'll be interested, uh, aside from the normal um private sector reviews, we hope to bring you the commercial solar ordinance for a public hearing on November nineteenth. And the repair and uh buffer protection standards will be brought as a work session on the twenty-sixth at six P M. Yeah, we've, that, we've got two work sessions that day.
Well, Mr. Barnes, I know you talked about sending around a calendar. Is that, will those be on it?
We sent you this calendar.
Thought so, yeah.
And I'm just, I just wanted to reiterate it.
Okay. Didn't know if it had changed at all.
I very, I think what I may need to do is give you an A C forty-four calendar and then just refresh the the meetings we have for the, for the rest of the year.
Yeah, okay.
I'll also send.
Thank you.
I can also send calendar updates for the extra meeting this month as well as the three in November.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Awesome.
That's what alls I have. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Thanks. Moving on to new business, any new business? I'll mention one thing. I don't know if this qualifies as new or old business, but at one point, and I know we're going to be piled under with comp plan stuff, but if there's a time where there's a low uh amount of public hearings, and we can squeeze in something like an update on schools, I think someone talked about, or you mentioned Ivy Corridor, um, we've talked about the housing policy, we've talked about other things that could help this sort of inform and give us kind of a broader understanding of policies.
Yes, sir.
Any other older new business?
I'll just mention that, you know, obviously, we had a lot of flooding in Abmaral County recently. We had some severe rains, and I think this is just an opportunity, you know, as we go through this comprehensive plan process to really think about, um, think about what happened to Asheville. Think about, you know, the areas in our county where we had um infrastructure that was too close to roads. And, you know, we, you know, we really dodged a bullet, you know, it could have been, been us and not Asheville. And so as we we go through this comprehensive plan, that, that maybe this is an opportunity for reflection.
Great. It's a good point. Yeah, thank you.
Chair, along those lines, not, not trying to, not trying to sort of do a rural and development area, but we also during that same, same period, I think there was some failure of our waterworks um because of the amount of water that they took on. So if we really are thinking, this is, this, again, I'm not trying to sort of do a, do a this or them. But if this plan is really to push people or to enhance the development areas density, at the same time, we need to be looking at those in those, those items, which are infrastructure, water, sewage.
Yeah.
And and to the extent that there's electricity that allow people to sort of say, that's a viable option for me to live. It's one thing if I live in the rural part of the county and I've got to deal with sewage, I've got to deal with my own well, I can put a generator in. And I can pretty much get through unless a tree falls on the house. I can get through any, just about any situation. But if I'm living in the density, the most dense part of the area, I don't have the opportunity to put a, to put a generator in. And when the water treatment facility goes down, which it did, then I'm in a bit of a pickle um until I can get up again. So looking at those items of redundancy and how do we in fact create the kind of infrastructure that allows that to be a resilient and that's part of our.
Great, thank you. Um, great comments. So with that, I think I am going to adjourn Planning Commission until, somebody help me, remind me? Thank you. So uh, October twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four at six P M. We are adjourned.
I don't want to go back. I'm not going back.
So I think it's four P M., not six P M.